For the meeting this morning, please ma'am, please sir, please make sure that your phones are on migrate or turned off. Take any advance.
All right, good evening. All right, good evening and welcome to our public hearing in a regularly scheduled county council meeting. Our public hearing will begin at five forty-five and the public hearing is in reference to ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, which is an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds within the unincorporated areas of Williamsburg County to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Williamsburg County. And that is what our public hearing is for. Is there, if there is anyone here to speak on behalf of this particular public hearing, now is the time to do so. And the remarks will be limited to three minutes, please.
My name's Bethany Rodriguez. I just wanted to ask, does this have anything to do with-
One moment, and thank you so much, Mr. Rodriguez. I apologize. Can you give us your address as well, please ma'am?
Oh, four zero nine Emi Road.
All right, and that is King Street? Very good. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to ask if this was in reference to personal property at all? Or is this just on parks and regulations?
I'm not sure I understand your questions. Your question.
Is this on any regulations on personal property? Property that I own?
Are you, are you, are you planning to open a campground or RV park on your personal property?
No, sir.
Then you should be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if it's your personal RV, I mean, here's the thing. You cannot live in an RV, that cannot be a permanent, permanent residence. And I'm not saying that that's what you're doing, Ms. Rodriguez, but we've seen where that's happening here in the county. RVs and campers can only be used for recreational purposes and temporary purposes. They cannot be a permanent residence.
Okay.
All right.
In response to your question, the ordinance applies to a lot of parcel property that contains two or more recreational vehicles. So it would apply to some parcel property where two or more recreational vehicles were intended for use. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Lewis Drucker, one eleven Buck Strong Road, King Street, South Carolina.
Yes, sir, Mr. Drucker.
Is there a grandfathering clause in this ordinance where, what I mean is if it's already RVs in place, more than two on a piece of property? So we still apply to those if they're, they're legal right now, but if the ordinance passes, they would become illegal?
Well, there's some state law-
Standard.
There's some state laws in place that also help regulate that. So even if they were in place prior to this ordinance being passed, if they violated state law, then they're still in violation.
Second question I got is, is tonight the second reading on this ordinance or the third reading?
Tonight is the third and final reading on it. Yes, sir.
Because I didn't see the, on the website, the second meeting in November posted on the website. That's why I was asking that question.
Okay. Thank you, sir. It was on there? Okay. All right, anyone else? Yes, your name and address for the record, please.
Hiya, how you doing? How you doing, Mr. Washington?
I'm fine, thank you.
How you doing, Miss Tammy? That's good. I ain't seen ya in a while.
Yes, ma'am.
No, I would just really ask, no question.
We still have to get your name. I know, we have to get-
This is Miss James.
Miss James, Anita James. Let the record reflect that it's Anita James. Could you please give us your address, please ma'am?
Address is McClary Lane. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just asking a question. Did this have, you had to speak upon the ordinance? You have to really talk about that? Can you talk about something else?
No, ma'am. It's only for this ordinance.
So when do a person talk about something else during public hearing?
The public hearing is designed for people to only be able to speak on that particular issue, nothing else.
So you deciding or dictating when a person could really speak about something? That's what you're basically doing.
No, ma'am. It's, it's, it's a public hearing. If you want to speak on another, on another issue, then you can contact a member of your council, a member of council, your member of council, or any member of council. Or you can send in a written request to the clerk to counsel. And then we'll be making a determination whether or not you would be placed on the agenda. But as it relates to public hearings, the public hearings, you can only discuss what the public hearing is for. Because otherwise, it wouldn't be fair to the folks who do want to speak on that particular issue for us to speak on other issues. So, you know, we'll, you have to stay to that issue.
That's the reason why I asked that question.
Yes, ma'am. All right.
What else is speaking on it? Can we discuss something else?
No, ma'am, you cannot. Yes, ma'am. All right. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am. Good seeing you again. Yes, ma'am. No, ma'am, but we, we've already officially began the meeting. So I can't have any, you know, any comments that I make now have to be a part of the record until we begin this meeting. I mean, I can answer any questions that you may have after the meeting. But unless, unless you're on the agenda, no, ma'am. Okay.
Everyone's okay.
Good. How y'all, how y'all?
Hey, all right, how you doing? Hey, Ms. Jackie, how you doing?
Good afternoon. My name is Barthina Conyers.
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-six thirty-six East La Highway, Greeleyville, South Carolina.
Yes, ma'am.
I just would like to state that I'm in the process and I would love to build a campground on our property in Greeleyville.
Yes, ma'am.
And I come to this afternoon to find out exactly what, all I have to do, and I got this. And is there any help I can get to build this? Because this is something that I would like to do because I would like to give back to Williamsburg County.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Williamsburg County born and raised resident. And I raised my children here and I had to send my children to Florida to go to a campground. And they're all grown now and got their own children.
Yes, ma'am.
But I would love to provide a campground-
Sure.
Where other people, the school, the churches, community, they can come and enjoy recreation at a campground.
Yes, ma'am. We would, the first thing you would need to do is meet with our codes enforcement office and share with them what you plan to do. And then we would be glad to meet with you at a later date to discuss, you know, maybe some, you know, potential folks that might be able to assist you with the financing of it. But obviously, that wouldn't be anything that we could discuss tonight. But I would, I would be more than happy to sit down and discuss that with you as well as take you down to the folks at the codes enforcement office and introduce you to them where you'll be able to chat with them and give them an idea about what you're just talking about doing so they can give you the legal and proper way of doing it. So everything will be above board.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I look forward to talking with you. He's fine, he's fine.
Based on the campgrounds, does this applies to all the municipalities within the county?
Well, you know, the municipal, and that's a great question. The municipalities would have the ability to create their own ordinances within their municipal jurisdictions. As the ordinance is written here, the ordinance that we are discussing tonight will take care of all of the unincorporated areas, which would mean the areas that are outside of all of the municipalities. Yes, ma'am. That's what this ordinance would, would, would take care of. But that's a good question. Thank you so much. All right, good evening and welcome to our regularly scheduled county council meeting on December, Monday, December fourth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. At this time, we would ask Councilman Jonathan Miller if he would please lead us with the invocation this evening. Councilman Miller.
Thank you. Good evening. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for the opportunity as a governing body to come before our citizen of Williamsburg County. We actually, Heavenly Father, God, our hearts, soul, and mind, that those decisions made tonight will be for the betterment of each citizen and our county. We ask these blessings in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you so much, Councilman Miller. All right, approval of minutes. The regularly county council meeting, twenty, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. We need the approval of the minutes of that meeting. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three meeting?
Some movement, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Councilman Woods. Is there a second?
Second, Miller.
We have a second by Councilman Miller. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion has been carried. Okay, our ordinance is first reading title only, which is an ordinance authorizing and approving an amendment to the agreement for development for joint county industrial park by and between Berkeley County, South Carolina, and Williamsburg County, South Carolina, to enlarge the boundaries of the industrial park to include certain property located in Berkeley County, South Carolina, now owned and or operated by Jessen Lane LLC and other matters relating thereto. This is a first reading title only. Is there a motion to accept first reading?
No movement, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Councilman Floyd. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Wilson. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has been carried. Thank you. We have second reading. Second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, an ordinance authorizing the execution and the delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, the county, and a company identified for the time being as Project Field Trip, acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and/or other project sponsors collectively, the company, pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities at one or more locations in the county, collectively the project. Number two, the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company and the project. And three, other matters relating thereto. Is there a motion to accept second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash fifteen?
Some movement, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to accept by Councilman Woods. Is there a second? We have a second by Councilman Wilson. Are we ready for questions?
Go ahead.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion has been carried. All right, second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, an ordinance authorizing and approving an amendment to the agreement for development for joint county industrial park by and between Berkeley County, South Carolina, and Williamsburg County, South Carolina, to enlarge the boundaries of the industrial park to include certain property located in Berkeley County, South Carolina, now owned and/or operated by Riverbend Charleston Properties LLC and other matters relating thereto. Is there a motion to accept second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash fourteen?
No movement, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Councilman Floyd. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilwoman Hales. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has been carried. Third reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, an ordinance to establish rules and regulations for recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds within the unincorporated areas of Williamsburg County to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Williamsburg County. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? We have a motion by Councilman Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Lee. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion has been carried and this ordinance has been adopted. All right, committee reports. We have a finance committee report addressing the reduction of the number of employee furlough days. Councilman Woods?
Yes, sir.
Vice Chairman.
Yes. You want me to speak on that?
If you, if you want to, or either I can-
Okay. Okay, the finance committee met, and we made, had a recommendation and we made, we recommended that we originally were scheduled for four days furlough and we would like to immediately reduce that four days to two with the intentions and the, with intentions of eliminating the other two furlough days, which would be a total of doing away with all of the furlough days. But because, why are we doing two now and the other two later on? Because we have identified the funds to go ahead and do away with two right now and we will continue to look for the other two once we have done the initial two. So that was our recommendation to the full, the full council that we go ahead and do away with the two furlough days. And at a later date, once we identified more funds, other funds, then we will go ahead and eradicate the remaining two days. And that was our recommendation to the full council.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chairman. Does anybody have any questions for Councilman Woods? Yes, sir. Councilman Lee? Yes, sir.
On that reduction of the number of employee furlough days, it says the committee wanted to make, there were no furlough days around the Christmas holidays. Is that, is that still going to be entwined in this thing or is that, or, or it doesn't matter which days it takes?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
It says on this handout that was in our packet-
Yes, sir.
The reduction of the number of employee furlough, and it says just what Mr. Wood said about taking two out of the four.
Right.
But then the second stipulation said also the committee wanted to make there were no furlough days around the Christmas holidays.
Yes, sir. That's correct. Yes, sir.
So that's included.
Yes, sir. I'm assuming that's included in, and yes, that's included in the finance committee's recommendation, recommendation to the full council. Yes, sir.
And just for a point of clarification, Councilman Woods and his supervisor, correct me if I'm wrong, but Councilman Lee, what our intention was, if any of these furlough days were scheduled of the four, if any of those days were between now and Christmas, we wanted those to be the ones waived so that folks could work, have money for Christmas. In other words, we didn't want any furlough days between now and Christmas.
Okay.
That's what we, what, what the decision was. Okay? Hopefully that-
The two closest one to the holidays, be it before Christmas or after Christmas, the two furlough days that were nearest to the Christmas holidays, we would try to eradicate those first.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Had the finance committee looked at the possibility of no furlough days? Because of circumstances, you know, we, we had a, a big layoff last year or last furlough and retirement, and we brought those people back. And they are still getting a retirement and working. And did we consider no furlough days or, I know at one time it was a four, then we went down to two. Because it seemed like every month or so, we would find some money someplace here, someplace there. And with the new millage coming in, did they consider no furlough days?
Absolutely. That is, is something that's been considered. In fact, and I want to make sure that we, the record reflects, that it was always a position of the, of myself not to have any furlough days at all. But this was something that was put into the budget to help get the budget balanced. We have found monies to do away with two of the furlough days. I feel very, very, very comfortable, Councilman Miller, that we should be able to find monies to do away with the other two days because it serves as an incentive for the finance team to try to find that money somehow so our employees don't have to take off and not get paid. Because at the end of the day, you got to remember, the men and, and women that we have working in finance, they are employees. And so they have an incentive to find this money to make sure that these employees don't have to take off because they're going to have to take off themselves. And as you all recall, I explained to you all earlier that elected officials, which all of us, with the exception of Madam Clark, all of us are exempt from furlough days. And I said from the very beginning, and I'll say it again tonight, and I think there were quite a few of you all that agreed with me that I would never ask the employees to do anything that I wouldn't be willing to do. And so if our employees had to sacrifice furlough days, then I would do the same thing. Although I was not required by law to do it, I would ask this council to vote to reduce my salary by one tenth, because, one tenth of that particular pay week. I don't want my wife to hear that. One tenth of that particular pay week, which would be one day, to do the same thing that we would be asking the employees to do. So the short answer, Councilman Miller, is yes, we're going to be working to, to find the funds to, to also take those other two days off the book as well. But we do have funds available to go ahead and at least start with these first two days. And then we will continue to work and, and try to find monies, you know, whether it be through cost cutting or monies that we've saved in other ways to go ahead and take those other two days off the books.
I think it'd be advisable as well, if you would enlighten us as to, well, not us, everybody, as to the amount of money we're talking about for furlough days, how much money we're talking about it would, we have to generate to accommodate those days, find the money to take care of those days. Because during budgetary times, of course, it was very important for us to make sure we got that budget passed in time. So when you're talking about taking away all of at one time, it may not be very prudent to do that when you don't know what's going to come up. But at least we can get two out of the way.
Right.
And then we will work diligently on alleviating those other two.
And if I could just-
Yes.
Piggyback on that just a little bit, I missed this supervisor. To my colleagues and to everyone in watching, there's a second part of this memo that explains, we didn't really find money. It's not like we lost money. We went out and found it. Money was just allocated in a, in a fashion that it shouldn't have been done. And so it was made available to us and that's why we were able to use it. But if you could go over and explain how these monies-
Absolutely.
And it wasn't any fault of anybody on this council or the finance committee or the supervisor.
Absolutely.
So I think that's important, we clarify.
Sure.
None of the, no other department head, anybody's had anything taken away from it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Periodically, our finance department and the treasurer's office, they meet to, to review the county's payroll account. Upon reviewing the reconciled bank account, it was agreed that the amount that finance had been requesting from the treasurer's office to transfer from the general fund to the payroll account had been more than what was actually needed. After payroll is completed, finance uses, the finance department uses the data in our system, in our payroll system, to determine how much to request from the treasurer's office to move from the general fund. This request includes the actual payroll, federal, state taxes, FICA, both, on both retirement systems in which our employees belong to. Because of the way that these financial systems have been set up from the original- from the original implementation, it, it needed to be changed and it wasn't changed. We have, they, because of that, and because of it, the, because of them not changing it, we had been overcalculating the amount of some of the fringes. Now, we weren't taking anything from the employees. Let me, let me be clear about that. We were not taking anything from the employees. In fact, we were overcharging ourselves. And the money was actually being placed in the payroll account, which is exactly where the money has been sitting the entire time. This has been going on for quite some time. And again, upon a review um, by our office, our finance team and the Treasurer's Office, um, it was determined and, and it was this, these funds were found there and there were more money in there than there needed to be. And so I thought that it would be a good thing since we asked our employees to make a sacrifice with four furlough days. I thought that instead of asking the employees to take those four furlough days, we could use that money to take a couple of these days off the books to help these folks. Uh, we have some, we're very fortunate and we have some very hardworking employees. Um, in any business that you have, your employees are your number one asset. We cannot do anything that we do without our employees. And so this was a way for us to at least try to help them and to, to at least show them that we are sympathetic towards them and what they're dealing with. And so that's why I, I presented this um, to the members of council and to the Finance Committee. Um, and, um, that, this, this is my recommendation to us, to try to help them by reducing the number of furlough days. And again, it's no financial impact um, because the money i- is, is already there. This money uh, has been there for a moment. And so we, we're just trying to help the employees out if we can.
So, um, Mr. Supervisor, um, or Mr. Woods, can you clarify that you're saying that you'll probably reduce two in next year if and when, if you found some more, you would do the other two? Are we gonna come back and do the same process, or what we vote tonight would take care of both?
I was, oh, but, but, yeah. I was hoping it wouldn't be next year. Um, I hope if we can do, go ahead and, uh, get rid of two of them now. But then months, we can go ahead and, um, identify some funds to do the remaining two. That was my thought. And I, I still wanted, um, the supervisor to, we talk about furlough days, how much money are we talking about when we talk about a, a furlough day countywide, what amount of money we're talking about? I think that's important for the, the citizens to know we're not talking about a thousand dollars or anything like that. It's, it's substantial. So I think it'd be uh, very prudent and, and, and purposeful for him to enlighten us as to what amount of money we're talking about when we talk about furlough days.
Thank you so much. The estimates are around sixty-two thousand dollars per day. Um, sixty-two thousand dollars per day um, is what we, um, estimated that one furlough day would save the, um, you know, save, uh, in the budget. Um, but back to your, uh, question, Councilwoman Hales, um, what we plan to do if, um, if we're successful tonight with these two days, obviously, we're, we're continuing, we're reviewing constantly the financial, um, the finances of the county, constantly. And so what we would do is within the next um, month or two, we'll take a look at where we're gonna be at because we're, we only have six and a half months left in this fiscal year because the fiscal year ends June the thirtieth. So we will continue to look at the finances. Um, if the finances, uh, continue to go, um, as they're going now, um, and we find where we can, um, get rid of the other two days, then we will come back and, and present that to this council, um, show the council uh, how we were able to find those reductions and then ask for council to go, to, to take those two days away as well. But we will not take those days without bringing those back before council. We have to bring those things back to, to you all.
So how are we looking with our debts and bills and stuff? Are we still looking good with that? Because if you found some money, you want, wanna put it somewhere where it could be real productive. But how are we with our bills? Or that money could only be used for payroll? Is that what that money is for?
Well, it's, it's in the payroll department. It's, it's in the payroll account.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I thought it would be most appropriate since it was already in the payroll account um, to be used um, towards payroll to help the employees. Uh, if council decided that they wanted to do something else with it, obviously that would be up to, to council um, to make that decision. Um, as it relates to our, um, financial situation, uh, let's, all of us remember, um, we were not in the best of financial situations. And we're in a better situation now than we were, but we're not out of the woods. We still have a ways to go. Um, but as I said during the budget process, I didn't think it was right then, and I still don't think it's right now for us to have balanced the, the, the budget uh, on the backs of, of our employees, which is kind of what we did when we put these furlough days. I mean, I understand that we were trying to get that budget pa-, get that budget passed and balanced. But, um, as, uh, Councilman Miller stated earlier, and I'm in agreement with him, you know, I've never been a fan, I wasn't a fan of furlough days uh, from day one, and I'm, I'm still not a fan of it. And if there's a way that we can can get these furlough days off the books to help these employees, that's what I want to do. Uh, because again, our employees are our number one asset. And we can't forget that. We cannot do what we do we, without these employees. And so we've gotta, um, these, these folks work hard. Um, some of them don't work, don't make great salaries. And, um, if we can do something to help them, you know, I'm, I'm all for it. And then that's what I want to do. But I can't do this by myself. I need you all to help me.
Mr. Supervisor.
Yes, sir, Councilman Wilson.
Uh, I, I think we all agree that our, our greatest asset is our employees. Um, and so we appreciate you looking out for them and trying to make sure that they have all the, the things they need um, to ensure that we have the, the, the very best out there working. And so we do appreciate that. And, you know, just to piggyback off of uh, what Councilwoman Hales is saying, I, I do believe you know, she's, she's just trying to look at the, the total picture. Um, but in looking at the total picture, we know that our first asset is our employees. And so if we can help them out, that would be a great asset to us.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Any other discussion? Right, is there a motion to accept the Finance Committee's recommendation to reduce the number of furlough days from four days to two days? Is there a motion?
With, with the intention.
I'm sorry.
With the intention of.
With, excuse me. Thank you so much, um, Mr. Vice Chairman. With the intentions of trying to find funds to, um, do away with the other two furlough days later in the fiscal year.
I would like for someone else to make that motion this time because I did it before. Um, I don't know, wish to make that motion again. So if someone else would do, uh, that would, I would certainly appreciate it.
Uh, motion to uh, accept the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
And now, just to, I wasn't at the last meeting, Councilman Woods, but I would second your motion, Councilman Wilson. I made the motion at the, at the finance meeting that this be the recommendation to the full body. So I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion by Councilman Wilson. Let the record reflect, we have a motion by Councilman Wilson. It has been properly seconded by, uh, Councilman Floyd. Are we ready for questions?
Question.
All right. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Let the record reflect, we have one vote of nay by Councilman Miller.
Motion carried.
Let the record reflect that the motion has been carried. All right, thank you all so much. All right, um.
Supervisor, if I'm in order at, at this time, before we go, if, I don't know if we have any executive session item or not, but before we move on, can, I'd like to recognize, um, Ms. Cheryl Lane there from my district, she would like to address this council.
Sure, come, come on up. Okay.
Good school teacher. I wrote it all out. Would you, would you council members like a copy of what I'm gonna read and share? No?
Yes, ma'am, you can bring it up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I am Cheryl Lane. My address is seventy-six Mount Vernon Road, Greeleyville, South Carolina, two nine zero five six. And I'm here, um, thank you to Councilman Woods for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll already disclaim any spelling errors or typos because I didn't have my bifocals on. The granddaughter probably hid them somewhere. I look around the room, I think I probably taught several people. Okay. I am here for the purpose to bring to the attention of all county council members an important urgent agenda for the citizens of the county and especially those of the county citizens of the Mount Vernon Church community and the Greeleyville area. Just to tell you where I live, I live um, right behind Mount Vernon Church. And our property extends down what the old time people called Seven Bridges Road, which is now Eight Bridges Road, thanks to the county. Um, and my other property is down Highway two sixty-one. And I'm on the Manning side of, um, two sixty-one, not the, um, other side. Our concern is the potential use of current timber land and really any land in our community for the development of the solar electrical industry. Some people call those solar farms. We don't call those solar farms. It's basically a solar electrical plant. And I'll share with you what we know, what we think is gonna happen, and how maybe, um, council can help us. What we know for sure, a land purchase was made by a company called I R I Forest Resources Management, LLC. Thanks to the Williamsburg County G I S system, anybody can go on there and look and see who your neighbor is. Well, these are now my neighbors. They now own several tracts near the Mount Vernon community. They own tracts, other tracts along Highway two sixty-one and between Highway two sixty-one and Greeleyville. Hunting leases that have been, hunting leases have been terminated recently as of November of twenty twenty-three on several of these tracts. Some of these tracts have been leased for over forty years by individuals and hunting clubs in the area. That leads us to believe that something is on the move. If hunting, if deer hunting le- leases were terminated in the middle of deer hunting season, something is going on. There was a massive amount of surveying last summer conduct, conducted by what we realized was an out-of-town group because the car, the truck said the Timmins Surveying Group of North Carolina. So we knew it was no local surveyor. A portion of, of, of an over three thousand acre tract. Now, let me let that sink in. I think it's technically three thousand seven hundred and seventy-four acres. Actually borders two of my properties. This is only one of many of the tracts in our area that is now owned by I R I Forest Resources Management, LLC of Wilmington, North Carolina. Now, that's what your G I S system says. We think we know who that might be, and it's probably not just a Wilmington, North Carolina company. But we can't say for sure. I'm trying to stick to the facts. Our home borders the portion of the tract that is a watershed for Black River, now designated as a South Carolina scenic river and soon to be a part of the South Carolina State Park System. This property borders a part of the Mount Vernon Church Road that runs directly through the river swamp. We are concerned because we feel that DHEC regulations and the current South Carolina Department of Resources Solar Habitat Act needs to be addressed as well as other regulatory entities. Research needs to be conducted into the loss of habitat by startup and known issues around the decommissioning of a solar plant, which a lot of people don't really think about. But solar plants generally have a lifetime. They're not like your Maytag washer that goes on and on forever. They definitely, from what I read, have a lifetime. And from what I read, the infrastructure cannot be recycled. So what happens at the end of a solar electrical industrial plant once the tax credits are up? I can offer some information on that. But basically, um, legally, any LLC notation limits the responsibility of the company and they often walk away leaving a mess on our property. And why, when I say our property, the county, county area. What we anticipate, we anticipate that there will be movement toward the building of a solar electrical energy plant. And if so, it would lead to forthcoming lease agreements between the current landowner of I R I and some to-be-determined solar group. I did my homework in the records room and I cannot find a current solar lease agreement between I R I and any solar investment group. That's not to say it's not there, but I couldn't find it. So we think they're in the infancy So we think they're in the infancy of whatever they're going to do. Number two, that there will be massive loss of native habitat. Just the one tract that borders me is over 3,000 acres. And we hear rumors, well, we don't need to know, I mean, we don't need to say rumors, they own multiple tracts on our road. According to the amount of land that could be developed, other impacts are yet to be determined based on the impact to our community, which for one, we found out will definitely be a decrease in our personal land value if such a solar electrical plant goes in. In conclusion, it is encouraging for the residents of the Mount Vernon community. And like I said, we've only had a hint of this since the middle of November. So it's encouraging, as we came tonight and as we read your agenda, for us to see that you're helping people in areas that are unincorporated, such as the ordinance tonight. So we know that you have it on your heart to help with ordinances in areas that are unincorporated. We thank you as we move forward, and we officially request time at the next Williamsburg County Council meeting later on in December. We can't, we cannot impress upon you how passionate we are about the protection of the habitat for our two-legged, four-legged, and no-legged inhabitants of our county. For years, I taught in Williamsburg County ecology classes at the seventh grade, seventh and eighth grade level. And it was, it was, it's been a passion ever since I started teaching. My teaching career started at Chappie Middle School in Georgetown County. And from Chappie, I came here to Williamsburg County to teach. I taught ecology there. I taught ecology here to probably over 2,500 residents of Williamsburg County. So I told County Supervisor Washington, and I spoke with Councilman Butch Woods. The word passion is my middle name. So I am super passionate about this. We can, we're available to do and provide any research that is needed to county council on this topic. I've already reached out to people across the United States that are in rural areas, and they are facing some of the same problems that we are in Williamsburg County. And I say, why reinvent the wheel? If somebody's already done it somewhere else, if they have talked about responsible solar energy, then that's what we want to talk about. We want to protect our community and protect all of our inhabitants, and especially Black River.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lane. Good seeing you again. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Cheryl before she takes her seat?
Yes, sir. I have one question, Mr. Supervisor. Ms. Lane, I think I share your sentiment as well. I guess I'm just as passionate as you are about this situation. But my concern is, I see where you say you would like to come back before council again. Prior to coming back, if you can reach out to some of those other counties, and see, my dilemma is this, and this is what I understand, that even the 3,700 acres of land that this solar company have purchased or whatever, if, if the land is purchased from a private landowner, how do we have the authority? And if you can find this out, we may follow suit. How do we have the, how do we gain authority to stop them from allowing those solar companies to come on that property?
Well, that's probably, well, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll look into that.
Yeah.
There are, there are some avenues that can be taken to slow down, make less desirable land in Williamsburg County available to somebody who would just come in and take advantage of us.
Okay. Well, if you can get that information for us, that'd be quite helpful, then I'll...
Do you want it before the next council meeting?
Well, as soon as you can get it, just give me a call, and I'll come and we'll take a look at it. Mr. Supervisor?
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay.
We'll talk.
Thank you.
Ms. Lane, thank you so much. All right. I, uh... We do not have an executive session tonight. I do not have a county supervisor's report. Is there anything from any of the members of council that you all want to report or say prior to this adjournment? Anyone? All right. Our next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 19th.
November?
Oh, Lord, December. Tuesday, it's been a long, two, two days, two or three days, y'all. Please excuse me. Tuesday, December 19th, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Tuesday, December 19th, at 2020, the year 2023. All right, this year, in two weeks. All right. It's been a long two or three days, y'all. All right. If there be no other business for the people of Williamsburg County, is there a motion to adjourn? We have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Wilson. Is there a second? We have a second by Councilman Woods. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you all so much. Have a good evening. Safe travels back to your home destinations.